Came to the city. They talked about putting this in the round area in front of the old Rusty is what it's kind of become known as fountain on Broadway. And we thought we would enhance it and move it down next to the Union Pacific, put it in between the squirrel cage and in the Union Pacific. But the cost of developing the plaza ended up being a couple hundred thousand dollars. To that end, we made application to Iowa West, and it just wasn't in the cards for this particular project. And so we did not get funding for the plaza there. The initial Broadway location, as you can see, there's a cost estimation on there. It is a conservative estimation. We think that it possibly could come in under that. And so the donor would like the city to consider returning it back to Broadway in that rounded area, provided a picture of kind of what it would look like, and then a picture of where it would sit. The picture where it would sit has that yellow car in it. And then the artist would maybe enhance it a little bit, but the donor has agreed to help raise the money to pay for it. We don't have anything in the budget for it. It went before, I believe, and I want to check with Larry, it went before the both the parks, and he's giving me the thumbs up. The Arts Commission and the Parks Commission reviewed both sites and approved both sites when they looked at them. And so they are agreeable to either or. I guess this is the opportunity, if you have, want to give feedback on this site, if you think that it works for you, we would come back later with some official action to allow it to be placed there. Or if you think it doesn't work for you, if you would express that.
So it would be like in front of the fountain? I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah, as you can see, to the north would be the US Bank Bill. Well, I guess it depends on how you're holding it. Where the car is, if you hold that up, the white car, if you hold it that way to the north is the US Bank Building. The fountain is off the sheet to the right. There's that little turn that comes in and goes around and then goes down Sixth Street. That little triangular piece in there is where that clock tower is. And so there is just a green space in there now, I think with some rose bushes maybe. And so it would fit in that lot. Old Rusty is back behind it. And if you look at the other one with the yellow piece and the red arrow, you can see old Rusty in the background. And we'd have to move that fire hydrant that sits there, but other than that, you can see the roses in the background that frame that area. And so.
It wouldn't be like taller than that, right? I mean, it's not going to cover that.
No, they, I also included pictures. I would tell you that he's on a pedestal. And so they're life-size, maybe a little bigger than life-size, but not much bigger. And so it's not as tall as it looks. Danker is behind it, and the artist is up close. But again, that is on a pedestal, so he can work on it without getting down on his knees.
It does look like he's following the traditional heroic size of one and a third.
Yeah.
Much of, well, Western history, that's till the last century, that's how statutes tended to be done. How would this affect? There've been talk of either that area or other areas around town for prominent locations, for example, for having something after Amelia Blumer, one of the greatest women in American history. And we have lots of things named after her husband, which if you think about that, is a travesty. A great proponent of women's rights, and we have names, things named after her husband. How would that affect things like that? There's been talk of doing those statues particularly to underrepresented people in our city's history. I'd hate to see those get pushed to the periphery. Not saying I'm against this, this looks fantastic. I just, I worry that we may forget further people that don't even have anything named after them in their hometown, but the world knows. And the biggest one I again would hold up is Amelia Blumer, who has nothing. They're all named after her husband.
Yeah. Alls I can say is that there would be lots of potential locations, I would think, for a statue like that.
Just don't want to lose prominent sites. We've already, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody alive or here, but we've already neglected a lot to do with folks like that. So I just raise that to keep it in our consciousness.
The cost estimate that's laid out here.
This was, this was done by Heather in the Parks Department. She tried to cover conservative cost numbers. There are things like overhead and profit, contingency, construction administration. We think those are maybe a little high, and so we would try to work to get the cost of doing them down. But, but the, Ron, I don't know if you, yeah, sure. I don't know if you know Ron Mahoney, but he's the donor of the.
Ron Mahoney, 1430 Madison. Like Matt said, we had originally thought over here when I was here in November, but there was no money for that. So we thought this other piece of property was, would be adequate. The consensus a couple of weeks ago was downtown, 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 and this is definitely downtown. It's a site that can't be, a building can't be put on it, and so you're not taking any tax dollars in that regard. We're paying for the four statues and the dog, that's $300,000, so it's a healthy amount for us. And we'll find the money for the other landscaping also. I just need to know what type, what time you guys have supper, so I can come and have supper, because we're spending all our money for. But the thought is, is that a couple, couple comments, and I couldn't hear what Nat was saying, but one of the comments earlier was the traffic. And I've talked to some law enforcement, and they said that if somebody rear-ended somebody looking at this, it's not any liability to anybody. If it was a theory, you wouldn't have any signs up and down Broadway. Another thought was the lack of parking. But I, there's parking on Scott Street, there's parking on Pearl Street, there's parking on, south of Main Street and north of Main Street. And when people come and see these, they're not going to come 30 cars at a time, they're going to come one or two cars, or they're going to come by a bus. And hopefully the bus would let them out there and then take them on down to the park and then on down to the museum. So that shouldn't be a problem. Like I say, there's nothing there now, and it's virtually hardly any cost to you people. I just can't imagine why, if you want this downtown to be unique, that you wouldn't take advantage of this site. Wherever you put it, you're going to have a parking problem. You can have a little green space here and there, but you're going to have a parking problem or a traffic problem. And so I had the non-prel check. There's nothing like this in the United States with all four of them in bronze. A lot of them are one and, one and maybe two, but nobody has four of them. And so you're going to be pretty unique, and so you should get some excellent advertisement out of this as far as PR. We're honoring those that are helpless. I just think it's great. We're for it 100%. We're going to put it someplace. If you guys don't help us, we'll find a place to put it, believe me. And I guess that's about it. I just think it's unique. You don't hesitate to call 911, so maybe you ought to stroke them a little bit once in a while, too, so.
And the four would be a firefighter, sheriff, highway patrolman.
Firefighter has a, has a child with a mask on it. The policeman has a dog pointing with a shepherd that, that's ready to take off. Or the deputy sheriff is a lady, so we don't get into the problem with the lady in Omaha that got killed. Then there's a highway patrolman. So it's, it's a unique thing. I just, and that place there is, it's got a bell there, it's got, it's got the fountain. So evidently the council before you weren't worried about parking. And so it's, it looks to me like it'd be a natural, but that's your call.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron?
No, but just to say that you and your wife would always be welcome at my house for supper, and thank you for your generous donation to the city.
Six o'clock for supper.
Give me till 6:30, but yes.
You know, we've been looking over the years to what to do with that half rotary, and this would be good. It also keeps it in public use. That block, a lot of people don't know, but that corner, that, actually that spot in that part of the block was, the hotel that used to be there in the 19th century was the very first meeting place of the Nebraska Legislature. They met illegally in Iowa because Nebraska was still, it was, it was, it had just become a, the capital had been moved from the very tiny one at Nebraska City to Omaha City, as its name was then known. But there wasn't yet a big enough auditorium necessary to seat the Nebraska, the new Nebraska Legislature. So they met there, so, and it's leading to, sometimes you hear Council of Us referred to as the first capital of Nebraska. In some ways, that's true. And it was right there. And we don't mark it, interestingly enough, and maybe we ought to, because it's an interesting bit of historical fact. Because Council of Us, being considerably older, had a, had a thriving infrastructure in downtown when Omaha City was three blocks of dirt. So it's good to remember.
Well, from, from my perspective, I want to see this, this get done. It's old adage, but never look to gift horse in the mouth. And your generosity is, is quite noteworthy, as is the intent behind getting this done. And while the, while the location may not be quite as good as so the original thinking was, I think the important aspect is still that we get this done. And I think that the benefit to, to the taxpayers is, is, and not only the assessments done here by, by the mayor and his staff, but after trying their best to make the other location work. So this, this seems like a practical financial alternative, makes good use of, of this piece of real estate, and gets this done. So if, if the other site is not fiscally practical to, to get it done, then, then I would opt for this proposal.
All right. So we'll bring something forward. All right. Thanks. Appreciate your consideration. Next on the agenda is, her study session agenda is to review tonight's agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda?
I have a question about one of the claims, but I can ask.
Excuse me. Dan was going to speak.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right. Before we do that, John wants to talk about the changes in the Finance Department.
A couple of sessions ago, we talked about some staffing changes in several departments. And Mr. Ringenberg, I think you had asked me how close we were to getting the complete part done. I said maybe 80%. Finance Department has completed their evaluation of their department, what they want to do with structure and positions. So put together the same type of setup as we did before, with position changes, salary and benefit associated costs or savings, and mapped that out. Dan has the explanation that he put in the council communication packet with, for you. And I'll see if you have any questions about the numbers, and then I'll let Dan explain the plan for the changes.
I have a question a little bit on this, and some changes, but, so the differences are on here, obviously, but it's because you're going to be hiring new, will it quickly catch up as they've been, you know, because obviously you're getting the early raises and that? Is this comparing with what they're making, I'm assuming the people in those positions now.
Yeah.
So it could possibly end up not being much of a difference.
Right, right. So there are some assumptions in here. So the, for example, the first, the first two positions, the reduction would be a controller, adding a payroll and disbursement manager. That, that could end up being the same person. The job is one grade lower, so the, the maximum pay for the person that's in the controller position, it wouldn't be that level. But if that person got the job, then it would come down to the maximum of a, of a pay grade 24. So it would come down a few thousand dollars. My assumptions are, if, if that person doesn't get the job, well, we would probably have to pay someone off the street in salary and benefits. And then they would come up to the maximum over a course of a few years, they would reach up to the maximum of the, of the new pay grade eventually, so.
Some of them won't be that much of a difference in the long run.
That's very possible.
Any other questions for John?
I'm trying to get ahead. Oh, I have one more question on that.
Sure.
The hiring, like, process to do, so obviously we would have to hire new ones. What's the possibility, and I don't know the ins and outs of HR, so you're probably the best person to answer this.
Why would we have to necessarily re-advertise? You know, we've got like, let's say, I think there was what, three people that would be not retiring that were left in these positions.
Correct. Yep, two people were retiring, the other three are current employees.
That's what I said, okay. But you were saying in there, you know, or Dan said in there, they could apply for the new positions.
Correct.
Why couldn't we just move them, you know, do a lateral mover, whatever, if it's essentially the same pay grade, some of these look pretty close. I mean, obviously a few are a little bit lower, but wouldn't there be a benefit to that versus having to do the whole hiring process?
Potentially there could, however, they are all three civil service positions. So Civil Service Code says, if you have a job that changes materially, it's either going to be a reclassification if the job doesn't change a lot, it is a, you have to do an abolishment and add a new position and go through a hiring process that the Civil Service Commission has to approve if it is a significant change. And these three positions, their job descriptions did change dramatically. While they may not have changed a lot in pay grades, their job duties changed dramatically. So that's the reason why you don't just go, it's not just a reclassification, it really is a new position.
Could you speak to the efficiencies that are hoped to be gained by this reorganization, please?
I'll let Dan speak to that.
The efficiencies really have to do with the workflow and, and who's responsible for, who's responsible for dispersing funds, who's responsible for receiving funds. Is someone going to be responsible for an oversight of those and making sure that they all come in correctly? Right now, we've got those spread a little bit between the three supervisory positions in the division, and it's not always the best internal control structure for us. So what I did was to take the duties, first of all, all the duties, all the things that we do in the department, and try to put them into groups that made sense for internal control purposes for the most part, but also for workflow. Then to say, okay, who should supervise those? Do the positions that we have now generally doing those meet what needs to be done? And they needed to be rewritten to some extent to get them at those levels, because our compensation system does not work to evaluate every year what someone's doing and adjust their pay based on what they're doing. It's based on the job description. And so what's in the job description is what sets the pay rate. There are some things that are in the current job descriptions for those positions that were not being done by those positions. And there are other things that those positions were doing that were not in the job descriptions. So we needed to rewrite those, first of all, to get the right jobs in the right places, and then to move forward with the work that needs to be done in a more efficient manner.
I was impressed with the increase in internal control, having done a few of these, worked on them in my day job. I'm very much encouraged by the, the transition to best practice to ensuring those, those controls are in place, to have an efficient system that has those checks and balances in place, so that the same person isn't responsible for too many things. I think that's, that's, it's better practice to do it, as you've suggested. And so I appreciate your further explanation, so that other folks will understand what you wrote about.
Sure.
So this couldn't have been accomplished, though, within just changing the way it was enough, like, I'm concerned that we're eliminating possibly three people's positions, but yet we're still going to have the same overall things happening in the Finance Department. I don't know that, I would think there had have been another solution to this.
Yeah, that's, well.
And potentially the same three people hired, not to interrupt.
Yeah, they could be, but then there's a chance they might not be too. But if they are, then we went through this whole process, put a lot of undue stress on those three, and costs to the city. I mean, I just, I'm, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good question. And I think the answer lies in the way that this came together. It was not to establish the three positions and then try to put everything in those positions. What, what I did was to take, take it right down to the duties that we have to perform as finance, and sat with the staff and took a look at who does all those things right now. Then, once that was all done, to pull those together into some, some sorts and say, okay, who should be doing that? What's the best practice to get that done? And so when we put that all together, when I'm looking at the job descriptions for, say, the receivables area or the revenues area, I'm going, well, it doesn't match. We really have to do enough changes that we should rewrite the description. So we did rewrite the description, not with the idea that, that we were or weren't going to replace anyone, but that we would clarify what the duties of those areas were. Now, the, the conclusion that, that HR came to is that because these are civil service positions, we can't just promote or move or improve or, or move around, we have to open them up. Am I looking forward to having to do all those interviews? No, not really. But that was not the initial point. The initial point was to get the duties lined up in the right places with the right supervision in them. And once that was done, the conclusion through the, really the hiring and civil service rules indicate that we have to take the tack of eliminating the positions rather than just renaming them and, and reopening those positions.
There's no way to do any of this without, I mean, you couldn't have just made some minor changes to make it work, you don't think?
I don't think so. Not, not once we got all the, all the duties and all the, all the things that we do in finance together and then said, okay, group one ought to be doing this, group two ought to be doing this, and group three ought to be doing this, to get to the best practices point, because there was too much overlap in the original group. I understand your concern.
Yeah.
I understand your concern, because we don't want to be seen as an organization that just puts people out.
Right. I mean, some of these positions are positions that have been with the city for quite some time. I mean, you're losing that experience, too. I mean, you could possibly lose those people. You're going to start with someone that's going to have to be newly trained, so it might not work out for the best in the long run.
In the long run, it will. It may be a short time to get them used to our systems. But if we bring in the people that are there, already there, we don't have that downtime.
There's no guarantee.
But we do, no, there's no guarantee.
I guess the flip side of that, too, is that you may bring in some, some talent that's better positioned to get you to where you, you want to go in terms of process, or we, we otherwise retool or do some, do some refining of, of the current slots in order to develop those skills for, for the future. So sometimes you, you have to do some tough things in order to change, change the processes that you've identified, and I accept your analysis.
Either, thank you. Either way, there'd be, there'd be a certain amount of re-education and retraining and reorienting staff to what has to be done. What kind of drives this one to opening them up is simply the civil service regulations that say, we need to open this up because of the nature of the changes that took place to get us to what I feel is, is a responsible, best practices, proper internal control structure.
And in the end, as, as a financial decision, none of us are irreplaceable in the sense of we, whatever the, the city needs and whatever is relevant to current, current needs must be at the forefront over any individual concerns. And I'm not downplaying those individual concerns, been there. But, but as we make that decision, I, I think we, the number one criterion has to be what's relevant to the best use of that money.
Any other questions for Dan or John?
Do you have, because we have the new, I'm assuming these are the new duties that were in the packet. Do we have the old duties that we could compare to?
No, we don't. But again, if you want to take a look at all the notes that we took, we can do that. What I've done on those is to say, those sheets are the functions that each area would perform. They're not necessarily the job descriptions, but they're the functions that get moved into each area. Some of them stay the same, some of them move, some of them change. And there is not, there is not a document analogous to that one for the old structure.
How do we know that it's such a change then that it would have to be re-advertised?
That's in the job descriptions. So the job descriptions themselves, I, I can print them off for you. They're, all of our job descriptions are on the website. If you go to Departments and Human Resources, there's a section of job descriptions, and it's got everybody's current job description out there. But I can, I can print those off and bring them to you before tonight's meeting.
Just for the, like, the new ones and the old ones?
Those three, yep.
Yeah.
Sure.
That'd be good.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's jump back to the agenda. Anything on the consent agenda?
Anything on the public hearings? I will be abstaining from 4D. That's a project that my husband's company has worked on, so it's better to abstain.
On item 4A, I guess I should have given you a little bit of heads up there. Dan, I was going to ask, you gave me the full copy of the, of the CIP, and in reviewing that, I noticed on page 119 breakout for, for PW 17-21, and that regards the athletic complex Avenue J reconstruction. And the, the CIP listed funding for that project of $400,000. But tonight's resolution. But tonight's rev, resolution provides for $550,000 in, uh, in local option sales tax money. So I'm ki- kind of wondering what, what happened, uh, between the production of the, of the CIP and tonight's resolution that changed those, those respective costs?
Sorry, which detail was it?
I'm sorry?
Which detail was it?
Uh, 119.
I don't know, I think Greg, uh-
Because I thought Greg had sent it, I was gonna find it where he sent it.
I can give you a little bit of information on that. Um, as far as when we originally developed the, the project list for the CIP and submitted to Dan, the number in it was 400,000, which I, must be what's in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, after that point, we, we made further development in the project, found out that we were gonna have to do additional work in actually 17th Street, uh, which raised the cost of the project, the updated estimate, et cetera. So we now believe the project costs 550,000. Um, I attempted to get that update to Dan, but it may not have been in time to make it into the packet that was presented to you. But the latest version that Public Works has been working with as far as budget dollars has included 550,000 for that project.
Okay. Now, I, I notice I don't wanna divert too much to the CIP discussion, but I noted that you guys made some tough decisions in order to roll back the use of local option sales tax money to fit the, the new budget, I guess, now that the state has reduced the, the size of, uh, of the payout back to the city.
We made significant cuts.
You did.
One or two projects per year plus pushed a few later in the schedule.
So-
And we're probably gonna have to do more.
Uh, probably.
Yeah.
So, uh, so I guess, given that, where's that additional $150,000 in local option sales tax money coming out of then if we're going to use that source of funding for this project?
I believe in 17, I cut two projects to account for that. Now, obvi- and I raised that one by 150,000. So the bottom line number that, like I said, the latest version that I was working from included that additional money.
Okay.
Now, that may not have made it into the one that was shared with you.
Okay.
Which, which two projects were cut, Matt?
Ooh, um, good question.
I've, I've got that.
Um, I don't have mine in front of me, actually. Um, I can get that for you.
Mr. Rehm, I think she has it.
Yeah.
One was pushed back, so it wasn't totally cut, it just got moved further into a later year. Um, one of the pump station projects, I believe, was cut. Uh, rehab of a pump station.
Yeah, I-
Dan, do you have the changes I provided?
No, but, uh-
Well, I, I think, I think you-
Yeah, I-
I think he has it there, I think.
Sure, uh, 17 dash eight, Valley View Sewer Rehab, uh, 18 dash seven, 07, North 17th Street Sewer Rehab, uh, 18 dash 13, South 23rd Street Sewer Rehab, 19 dash 10, Layland Sewer Rehab Phase Two, uh, 20 dash 07, uh, wastewater plant solids handling blowers. It's a fun title. Uh, 20 dash 10, Oakland Drive Rehab, and 21 dash 08, uh, Franklin Avenue. So, uh-
Those are, he has those all being cut.
Yeah.
Those all sound correct. And when I say cut, that means they were cut from the five-year plan. Long-term, they should still happen, and they would be in year six, seven, eight, nine, 10, somewhere out there, but they just got pushed off the current CIP that you see in front of you.
I know, I saw that Oakland Drive Rehab on there because I kinda made, noted it, that that road was rough, and it was moved to year five, I think, on here, taken out.
And a lot of things that make it tier five, granted, I've noticed over the years that, you know, the, the farther out they get in, in that plan, which doesn't appropriate money, of course, means that it's something we, we think or we want, depending, but it may not very well happen. A lot of things stay in year five.
It's, you know, with our business, it's tough to project one year, let alone five years.
Oh, yeah.
When we have these emergencies, et cetera, that we have to spend money on.
Like 23rd, yeah, yeah.
Things shift in priority, and so-
Though, like, we learned in the, the police station, um, uh, debate, uh, time is money. So if we delay on other projects, it will inevitably cost more, and there, there's the cost-benefit analysis, which doesn't make, makes the problem even harder, but, uh, I, I struggle to see why we, why we, as a tax entity, that takes in less money than, than the school district that covers much of our community, but not, not, not all of it, um, why we would cover a road to an athletic facility over pump stations, which seems to be far more of a municipal purpose for life, safety, and welfare and the whole bit. Um, that, that part in the priority, I, I, I struggle with.
I, I think, and maybe you can clarify, or Greg, I thought I sent this, but maybe not. So I was concerned about it at first, too. And you guys had mentioned that part of this is that it's part of the access to North 16th, now that that's getting more traffic in, and you say that's kinda ties in with that project as well. That kinda helped me, like, understand further.
Well, but frankly, the, the school could pay for that. They, they raise more in taxes than we do, and why are we continuing to pay for their projects? I appreciate it's, it's a well-needed and nice addition, and I don't discount its importance for, for the city as a whole, not city, small C, not capital C. Um, but, but I struggle to see why we pay for such things.
Well, first of all, let me, uh, so you pointed out that there was a place where there was 400. I found a place on, on my, it says 184, and it's listed as 550. So somehow it got changed and, you know, this is where, this is the list of all Public Works projects. I think you were looking at a list of sales tax projects.
Yeah, correct.
So somehow the software didn't make the updates in all the locations or something, or-
Okay.
I'm not sure, but if, on mine, at 184, it shows that project is 550,000. So it is, it's in there in one spot, not all. I guess, to answer your question about how did this happen, so-
Yeah.
Um, I think it's been almost two years ago, the idea of the sports complex, uh, started to be more of a reality. We had kind of known for several years prior to that that there was a desire to implement something like that, but we never programmed it because we didn't wanna program something, and their project didn't go through, and then ours wouldn't go through. Um, but they came to us and said, Avenue J, City Street, it's gonna be our new grand entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you wanna participate in this effort? And, and my, um, perspective was, well, we're in the street business, they're asking us to fix a street.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense for us to do it. And at the same time, we're participating in something bigger than just a street project. Um, and we do that all the time, to be honest. We-
I know we do, yeah.
-go out of our way in the CIP to find projects that have synergy. We do it normally with private development, you know, at Gifford Road, as an example, currently underway.
Yeah.
Uh, so we've, we've often partnered with, with development to try and build something a little bigger than just another street.
When, when we-
We've actually done that to rearrange our priorities, even, to take advantage of opportunities.
We, we definitely have rearranged our priorities. Uh, for example, in fast projects with pa- past, excuse me, not fast, past projects with the school district, for example, the former Gunn and Walnut Grove properties, um, let's just take those as an example. I know those aren't a street, but they're, they certainly are a, a significant expense that the city has taken on through community development, time, and, and through our use of various block grants that we could've used for other projects and delayed several, including many I supported passionately, we haven't funded and still aren't funding. Um, to support those projects, can you, can you think of one past project where the school district has brought money to the, to, to the table for the benefit of the city taxpayer, bearing in mind that so many of them are Lewis Central or St. Albert? When does the city, when does the school dis, the Council of Schools, and the names can be a bit of a misnomer because the city of Council of Schools and the school district Council of Schools are two different things, and they overlap to a large degree, but not, not completely either way. There are enclaves and exclaves of both. But, uh, what, can you think of, because I, I looked, and I couldn't, and there, there probably is one, but I couldn't find it.
I can't do apples to apples, but tomorrow I'm doing a ribbon cutting at the, uh, the old trolley station, the Council of Schools put $25,000 into that.
They did, but I think that was for the rather noble purpose of their summer lunch program, so it benefits their program, I-
I think that, no, it went for the rehab of the building.
Sure, but we provide a free place for them to run their program, so. I agree, it was a mutual. I just, I'm struggling to see where the school district has put money on the table for something that benefits the city that also doesn't benefit the school district.
I can't say I have as a, as a, I haven't kept a tally sheet.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I think there needs to be a mutual relationship, not just give me, give me, give me.
Yeah. Well, I know that we've had very good working relationship on coordination. For instance, one of the projects that's final acceptance tonight-
Yeah.
-was replacing sewers on their ball fields.
Well, we gave that to them, though, but I, I mean, something-
On our sewer, and it leaked like a sieve.
Well, yeah.
It was in our best interest to, to rehab it.
Many of them do, but we fixed it so the ball field would work better. I, I, I'm just struggling to s-
I think that's a much path, but, uh, yeah, we did do that.
I'm just struggling to see, as, as an entity, I, I, a precedent, establishing a precedent of, frankly, there didn't appear to be any money set aside by the school district in their budgeting to, to take care of Gunn, to take care of Walnut Grove, and the entrance to their, their ball field. I, I'm just worried that there appears to be a precedent established that the city's good for it, you know, there's some supporters, and I understand they support it, but they say 550,000 isn't much money, what's the city's problem, or what's my problem? Uh, and, and I, I beg to differ, 550 isn't a lot of money. But I, and you know, and I see today there are plans that we've never seen before. I, I just think that as a council, if we're going to, as a city, make these a priority to work with these other organizations and to expend tax money, and we, I believe there was a consensus that government wasn't supposed to be funding nonprofit ventures, that people could donate, that we shouldn't be in the business of, of donating. That's, that's why my neighborhood grants program was shot down. So I, I want us to be consistent. So if, if we're not gonna fund projects for the betterment of the community when they're small and don't have big names behind them, I, I don't think we ought to do them when we, when they're big names behind it, big locally names, and that maybe not big in the scheme of things, but locally, some big names. Um, I just don't see why that makes a difference, other than for political reasons. And, and I just, I struggle to make decisions on finances based on whether I think it's going to make me look good. I just don't think that's an appropriate way to spend the money.
It's probably not all really Greg's part to answer, and-
No, no, and, and I, I open up discussion.
Not the, yeah, not the-
No, no, I don't expect you. I'm, I'm asking a lot of rhetorical questions, to be fair.
The only thing I can say, from my perspective, the builder of roads-
Sure.
-when the school said, we got a project-
Yeah.
-that is monumental-
Yeah.
...and a huge impact to this community-
Yeah.
-it never even occurred to me that I would turn my back on the school and say, not our problem.
What about-
In the right of way. It never would've occurred to me, and you guys have a different perspective, and that's, that we're in front of you today, do both the project up or down.
Sure.
It's your responsibility.
When we, when we worked with Lewis Central or St. Albert, when they redid Gleason Avenue, did we fund the, the improvements necessary to St. Albert's parking lot to increase the, because of the change in elevation to Gleason? Did we fund that?
Well, anything that, in the right of way, we funded, yes.
I, I don't think we funded everything there. I remember being part of the, my uncle was the school board president at the time. We didn't fund everything. We made them pay for it.
Well, I, I, that's not my recollection. Uh, in fact, I, I, I don't know how-
I remember, my uncle John was president of the school board at the time.
...to spend money in the right of way-
Yeah, well, but, but much of the elevation change necessary to meet the right of way, um, if you change the right of way by three feet, then their parking lot can't very well say, well, yeah, it's not in the right of way, but suddenly their parking lot's three feet off grade.
On a daily basis, we go onto private property through easements and do exactly what you just said.
But we did not do that with St. Albert.
Well, then we made a mistake because we do it all the time.
At Lewis Central, we put traffic lights in front of the high school, in front of the middle school, in front of the elementary school, at the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars in intersection, I'm sure, so.
Well, I, I'm just curious why we don't do that for other school districts if we're in the business of, of helping folks.
We do. We, we spent a quarter million dollars putting a traffic signal in for the high-
Well, I appreciate that, but what about St. Albert, a school that benefits a lot of people throughout the community, not just East, there's that perception, but it's not true. Uh, why do we pick some-
Well, St. Albert rebuilt Gleason and bought them.
But not the connections to them. See, the, my concern is that-
I, I disagree with your statement-
All right.
-that we did not pay for improvements that changed the grade into their parking lots.
Well-
That would be-
Okay.
-contrary to practice that we've had for years.
I, I just want us aware as a council that if, if we're going to, for reversing our consensus on funding, uh, projects, then I'll be bringing back my projects that were, that didn't even get vote, uh, because there wasn't two, two, there has to be at least two people in favor of something to bring it up for genu-, uh, for formal discussion, and I couldn't get a second. If we're going to start funding these projects with names behind them, then I'm going to bring back and expect folks to be consistent and to not just support the ones that have big names behind them. I, I just find that we, we're using the taxpayer money to fund projects for other taxing entities, um, and, and we're rather selective in our, in our, uh, belief as to the size of how much government should spend. We seem to, we seem to forget our scruples when it's something we like. And, and I want us to be consistent. We either fund these things or we don't. And if we're going to be, if we're going to fund them, then I'm going to bring mine back, and I would appreciate the courtesy of at least a second so that mine can see the light of day.
I, I think it's al- also important in considering what is funded and, and why, that we also consider, uh, how, uh, individual projects are being funded. In, in the past, I've been somewhat of a stickler, uh, about the use of, of local option sales tax money, and, and that's why I asked my, my initial questions. Uh, we, we, of course, have, have a problem in, in the reduction of sales tax money that's, that's coming in. And, uh, and when the, the voters in this city approved the local option sales tax, uh, it was with the understanding that it's going to be used for the maintenance and improvement of the existing, uh, street and sewer system. And, uh, while I think it's, it's arguable that, that this technically fits within the, the definition, I'm a little bit concerned that providing, as, as you put it, Mr. Reader, a, a grand entrance into the stadium facility is really what the taxpayers envision when they, when they set up the, the local option sales tax as a funding revenue, or as a funding source. So, um, I, I'm concerned that we've earmarked that money that's, uh, that's under, uh, increasing demand and, and increasing scare, scarcity in that. Uh, whether or not, uh, this is, uh, truly needed at this time, and if it is, can, can we not come up with a more appropriate source of funding for it?
Just, just a quick, got clarification on grand. All the aesthetics associated with the grand entrance are not being funded by the city. They're going through the school. So we're just building a street, and we're building a street that's suitable for the traffic volumes. So, yes, it is a grand entrance, but we're really not making it grand as much as we're accommodating the traffic, and the school's gonna make it look like a grand entrance, so. It, it is more than we would typically do. A typical residential street's 26-foot wide. This one's three lanes to account for the traffic, so it's not a typical residential street anymore.
When we look-
One of the reasons why we're rebuilding is because to do nothing would have caused traffic issues.
When we look to next redo, for example, Gleason, which already needs it, uh, will we be factoring in wider and, and spending like complements on that's, on that street as well as, I don't think it's as needed in front of Lewis Central, though that's arguable? Will we be factoring in such, uh, our, our part of a grand entrance in the other school districts in our community?
I think we've done that.
I don't see anything in the RFP, I, or, excuse me, not the RFPs, the CIP.
Oh, no.
We use acronyms like the military here.
Relatively speaking, all the schools have seen-
Yeah.
-some enhancements to the roads in front of them. That's, it's been for many years, kind of a priority of ours. Uh, I look back at, uh, Fifth Avenue-
Uh-huh.
-they made accommodations- We made accommodations when we did Fifth Avenue to account for the presence of a school in just about every location. We account for the surroundings and the demand.
Well, I remember, I happened to be a sophomore when, when, in high school, when St. Albert's Road was replaced, and that's been a few years, about twenty-one, oh boy. And that was the last time it was replaced, and that's before they consolidated their primary and intermediate on campus and put everything on one spot. And it, there hasn't been a major overhaul since then, twenty-one years ago.
You're talking about Lewis Central?
No, Gleason, oh, St. Albert Hall. Yeah, that, when I, it happened my sophomore year, I remember, because it was a pain to try to drive myself and my sister's school, but, so I remember.
Well, the average age of a street replaced Council Bluffs is fifty years old. Gleason is twenty-one years old, as much as it needs it, and, and, you know.
When did we last change Avenue J? Do you know?
J.
Yeah, the one we're being asked to vote on. The one we're talking about, sorry, thank you.
Most of the streets of the West End were done in the late forties, early fifties, mid-fifties.
I think, I think that one was early sixties, but I, that's off the top of my head.
Well, that'd make it fifty-plus years old.
Yeah, it would, it would. But I guess some of the direction that I'd like us as a council to figure out is, to the extent we engage in these projects, when do we do it? And why, and should there be reciprocity when we're talking about other entities that are taxing? I know, gosh, I know all of us had trouble with the schools, frankly, when, when they closed the schools without a plan to deal with them, and then we got stuck with the big problem of trying to make it right, and we made nobody happy. No matter what we did, we made nobody happy completely, Gunn in particular, goodness. And I, I don't want, I'd like to encourage them to actually plan for, you know, I think we as a city do a phenomenal job, staff does a great job of planning forward our needs, what we'll be needing in the future, what is our, what are our hopes, what's likely, what's the worst-case scenario, and we budget for it. It's not perfect, but I think they do one heck of a job. And when I, when I look at the schools, I, it seems like a lot of wishful thinking, and ask for more money, and ask for it from other groups, and if we don't give it, we're against the kids. And I just don't think that's a good way to spend tax money. No, I'm sorry, please.
I say, in this instance, I mean, I had some concerns when I saw it at first too, because we have heard a lot about it. But the more I researched, I talked to Greg, I talked to some of the school board, I talked to some of the people who had worked on this campaign, whatever you want to call it, for the new project.
Yeah.
They did approach us a long time ago, I mean, this has been in the works for a long time. I think one of the reasons we didn't see it, like Greg said, they weren't sure how quickly it was going to come to fruition. But you, it's been, I mean, they didn't just get to this point and decide, "We need Avenue J, we need you to pay for it now." All along, from what I understand, from what I've heard from everybody, all along, our plan was, this was our contribution as a city, because it's, it's helping the city. I mean, the, having a good school system here makes a huge difference on attracting residents and businesses. I mean, in a roundabout way, it's helping us too, but regardless, it is a street. I mean, it's not like we're just giving money to the stadium project. We're fixing this street, which, like I said, it did not just come up. It felt like it to me, it probably felt like it to you, because we didn't know what had went on.
Well, it may, it may have come up, and granted, I've only been here four and a half years, but I would have thought if they won a half, over half million of tax money, or originally four hundred thousand, gosh, they'd come to us rather than at the end and make us look like we're voting against kids if we don't, if we don't fund it. Which is a lot of the emails I got.
They did come to us, so that's the issue. We maybe had some internal communication.
Not in the last four and a half years, though, because I've never heard of it.
A couple of years, they came to the city, probably, that's what I'm saying, like, I'm saying internally, we may have had some communication, kind of, for whatever reason, we-
Lack of communication. Well, it may have, it may have gone to the former administration, but it didn't come to us.
The school board did what they, or the school, whoever we want to put, did what they thought was right. They did approach the city. The city worked with them, they've been planning on this. Did we, as council, know about it? No, I agree, we did not.
That goes back to proper government, that we need to start, we need to start, council, if the buck stops with us, we need to stop being at the, at the very tail end. Like, tonight, I vote against it, I'm against children, is what many of the emails I got. And I beg to differ, I'm not against them at all. I think however you vote, you're not against children. I think that's a ridiculous argument, if I may say so, with all respect to the people who sent emails to that effect. But to be at this point, we have a lot of these lately where people come to us, and I thought we, as a council, a couple of years ago, in a discussion, I think primarily by, by former councilman, now mayor, Matt, talked about how as, from a philosophical basis, or whatever you want to describe it, we didn't think it was best to use tax money to fund projects. If somebody wanted to give to the United, I'll pick on a few groups, wanted to give to the United Way, they could. If somebody wanted to give, I'll pick on myself, the Neighborhood Center, the former Neighborhood Center, they could. Why is it we sometimes say-
It's a correct recollection.
Because this is, this is a street, we're not giving to, we're not giving them five hundred thousand for this project.
Well, but we are.
What we're doing is fixing a street that's going to need fixed at some point, anyway, and that also helps with all the development we're doing down in that area. I mean, I think that's the difference to me, is that we're not giving the money straight to the project, they fundraised for the project.
Can you see-
We have a history of doing this.
I know we do.
We just approved doing the streets around the Y. Probably had a lot less time on that than we've had on this. I mean, they've talked to Greg within the last two years about this. I think with the Y, two years ago, I'm not even sure they knew they were going in that location, and not a word was uttered about passing that, and that actually is privately owned in that it's not, you know, not everybody in town is a member of that, some people are, some people aren't. But that got done, that got done there, and that's two streets that are being done, and nobody had any concerns. And so I guess I'm a little-
Will, will you at least then be willing to second for discussion at the next meeting to bring back my neighborhoods grant program that you didn't support?
That I didn't support? See, that's, you've got a memory that I just don't have. I don't remember not supporting your neighborhoods.
You said the taxpayers shouldn't fund, people can donate to such things, and it wasn't proper.
No memory of it, so, you know, obviously, when it's something near to you, you remember it better than, than I do.
I would hope I do, and that is what you said, and that's-
Very well could have.
And so-
I'm funding, I'm going to vote to fund a street tonight, which, you know, eventually, at some point, the street would have to be replaced, regardless of whether it went into the school, or it didn't go into the school, so I guess that's where I come with that.
Well, like, for example, neighborhood grants to support programs so that do reduce crime, that do increase the cohesiveness of our neighborhoods, particularly the older ones who need the help. Do you support that? Because it does release, it does relieve the burden on government. A lot of funding organizations, other than government, require local matches, and in my year away from law, I learned that the reason they do that is because they're trying to encourage people to do what they believe, and what I believe we should be doing anyway, which is funding these sorts of organizations. It may sound touchy-feely, it's hard for me to tie it back to this number of jobs created or saved, but it does go to that quality of life of, well, gosh, if I can choose between here and Topeka, why do I want to stay here? There are jobs there too, and it goes to the, well, I want to stay in Council Bluffs because there are these fantastic things to do. There are the neighborhoods where people just don't go inside every night and watch television. You know, there are things to do, there's, there's that vibe we're trying to get back. And those sorts of initiatives, and that's probably the wrong word, but efforts, don't have big backers to them, because they don't, they don't, really don't make anybody look good. They don't, they don't, they'll never have big names behind them. But they're the sorts of things that would do a lot of real good in our community. And, and I've just never been able, I've been frustrated, and I think, hopefully you remember that, I've been frustrated that we, that has not been a priority, and I appreciate, we all have different priorities, and you have every right not to share my priorities, of course you do. But I've been frustrated, we don't, we don't do those, and then, and I often get told in that situation, because government shouldn't be picking winners and losers in nonprofits or in those sorts of things. But then we do it when the schools want it, then we do it when Iowa West wants it, then we do it when you name it. And I'm not picking on groups, lots of groups ask us, lots of noble things. But we pick some and not the others, and I'm just asking for a fair shake in these projects. If, if, if the consensus has changed, and I hope it has changed, that we're going to start funding these sorts of things for the betterment of our community, then, then there'd be a level playing field. That's all I'm asking.
Other questions in relation to Avenue J?
I think there is one other thing I would want to bring to the council's attention, that the project as presented has the elimination of driveways on the north side of J, and the property owners on that side are not in agreement that their driveways should go away. And the school's been working with these business owners and have yet to come to a, an agreement on compensation. So, the project as presented has closures of driveways.
Do you foresee recommending to us that we pay for any easements, or?
Absolutely not.
No?
No, all right. Because I'd like to, if this does go forward, I'd like to see the taxpayers not have to pay yet more. A lot, a lot of times, projects come back, and I know things go up, we all know it, but I, you know, there has to be a limit. I feel like I'm saying back things that were said to me, but there has to be a limit to the taxpayers' generosity.
I mean, if you want to point the finger, uh-
Sorry, I, did I cut, I didn't mean-
Point the finger pointed at me. The school has, at least through three, if not four years, been talking to me about their plans, and their ideas, and their vision.
Yeah.
And I just presumed that the council would overwhelmingly support the idea of making this project happen and a better thing, and it, I, it's me.
No, I, I, I-
If you want to point the finger, point at me.
No, I-
I don't think the school did anything wrong. They came to, staff were here every day, and, you know.
I think that's very honorable you to say that, and I just, what I'm trying to telegraph, and I'll just be more blunt, to my colleagues on the school board, if you want to talk to the decision makers who spend the money, talk to the mayor and the council, just like we will talk to you. We don't, we don't go through staff, because that puts staff in an unenviable position of having to pick winners and losers among projects, and that's my day job. And day job, I live in a very large bureaucracy where both sides and different branches of government, same problems, really, try to push and pull me back and forth and put me in difficult positions left and right, frankly. But I always step back and remember my role is to implement what the policymakers and those who've been elected get to make. Do I agree with every decision? Oh, you better believe I don't, but, but I, it's, I don't like when staff who are professional and are doing a great job get put in the position of having to make representations or decide what gets funded. And then when, if the policymakers, namely us and the mayor, make a different decision, people think we've, quote, "changed our minds." I think people just fundamentally don't appreciate or fully grasp how government works. And I, I just, as a friendly reminder to my colleagues and other taxing bodies, the buck stops with you and with us, and you ought to come to us and keep us informed, particularly those of us, I've been here four and a half years, and I, I could be wrong, but I don't ever remember being part of one of those discussions. And so for them to wait till the, to the end, I'm just talking for future's sake, is really, really bad government relations. That doesn't make sense. And as we implement best practices, and I commend the mayor, when we do best practices in the executive branch, and I believe he is with a lot of these restructuring, we need to rebalance how we're doing it, too. We can't just have people come to us at the last minute for money, and then suddenly we've broken a promise we've never made.
And I think that's something, I mean, we all agree that's something that needs worked on as far as kind of maybe being more aware of what's going on, or if there's upcoming projects, you know, whether it be iOS or the school, or whoever anymore, maybe from now on, we come up with a way for like a quarterly update, or, you know, just something that kind of gives us-
Call us.
For us to know everything that's going on, because there's a lot, I mean, that's why he has a, you're full-time here to figure this out. So maybe big stuff somehow, you know.
They could call us, you know.
I would propose, and intended to later on tonight, that, that maybe we need to have a city council planning strategy just to get back on the same page. Obviously, we don't seem to be on the same page, and so I think that's important, but I guess I don't see this as much different than the other numerous street projects that, that are proposed by the Public Works Department that, that the council votes on, and you have the opportunity to vote on it. An example I can give you is, is the Pierce Street project that, that Public Works put on and got voted down on. And so, you know, it's not any last-minute request. It's been talked about, I think, since Tom sat in this seat, and, and the, the idea of, of a new sports complex came to light, and so.
That's fair, the only thing as part of that process, that's very fair. The only thing about that process that I think, one of two things I'd suggest needs to happen. The first is that there, either we get involved more early, and that's not my preferred option, frankly. I think the administration, that's an executive function, comes up with ideas and plans and cusses them out. I don't want to micromanage that part of it. But on the other hand, if we don't go that route, there needs to be a change in mindset publicly, particularly among other taxing entities, that just because, like in many of the emails, just because you've talked with city staff for three or four or five years, or however long, suddenly doesn't become a promise that something will get funded. I think it's, this is a good teachable moment for people to understand that until the governing body of whatever government level you're at, and then locally, that happens to be the council and the mayor, the legislative and the executive branch, until they actually say yes, you don't have anything. And there seems to be this misunderstanding that somehow government works before a council and a mayor or a legislature and a governor, or a congress and a president say so. It does not. And people need to, it's civics, and I want people to remember their civics.
And I think that misperception is probably out there. Roger had a conversation with somebody last week that said, "It's already a done deal", and I assured her, "No, it's not a done deal, that's, that isn't how it works."
People miss, they weren't listening in government, I guess.
And that's, that's what I was going to say, and it's a hundred percent about communication, in my opinion, and that goes to me, too. I, you know, I didn't know that Avenue J was in the CIP for the last three years. You know, I've only been sitting here six months, I know Nate's been here, everybody's been here a lot longer than me, but you have the, Melissa.
And it hasn't been in there, just so we're all on the same page. It hadn't been in there for three years, because we didn't know that the project was going to be successful, it's been talked about for that long.
So I just, to me, it is all about communication, and again, that's, maybe Nate's got it, it's a notebook I showed, so maybe I have it.
You got it back, I think.
So.
Uh, there it is, I hope I didn't take it.
This product's been, and similar, what happened with Iowa West and the Fieldhouse USA. Staff does a great job, but we didn't know about some of these things, you know? I mean, I didn't know about Fieldhouse USA at all. This, this Avenue J project, this picture that has been, I don't know when it was produced, a long time ago. First I've seen it was last week, when a lady from town came in and gave it to me, and showed it to me. And, you know, something like this is huge for all of us to see, and I know, I don't think anybody up here has seen this.
Not till today.
You know, this is something that, I mean, that, that is very poor communication, in my opinion, and I think that it's just got to stop. And I think we're making strides in the right direction, we're learning. I know I'm learning, I've only been here six months, but communication is, is just the key to all of it, and it, it's got to get, continuously get a lot better. Because as Melissa said, on the face of it, when we see this, it's like, well, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, was the road really needed replaced right now? We're just going to do it. But it's been in the plan, we've been talking about it. And, you know, again, that's a hundred percent on me, too, on communication. Maybe I should have asked, "Hey, what are the big projects coming up?" You know, I didn't do that either. But Greg, Don, whoever was at the table, whether that was Matt, Wendy, whoever, I think needs to involve all of us a lot more.
The other thing about, since CIP's up tonight, I think it's, it's tangential to that, to this point. It's a planning document. It, it, it's a rolling five-year, lots of things get put in year five that we'd like to get to. Certain things stay a lot of times in the fifth year, because things happen. Emergencies happen, look at Twenty-third Avenue, for example. Things happen where it takes a lot of money, and then if things start to get more serious, I've noticed over the years, if anyone disagrees, I'd like to hear their perspective, genuinely. But it seems like if something's about a year or two out, I've noticed over the last four and a half years, that it's more likely that we'll see a concrete, no pun intended, proposal in that next year for it. But that doesn't necessarily mean it will happen, and just, for example, the CIP's up tonight, just because something- But that doesn't necessarily mean it'll happen and just, for example, the C I P's up tonight, just because something's in the C I P, it does not mean that there's a promise that it'll get funded or that, well, you said it happened in year four because you've got it in your planning document. Well, we have lots of planning documents and I think it's important to plan, don't get me wrong, or you never know how you're gonna get anywhere where you're, when you've arrived. But it's not a promise until it comes before us like votes tonight where we actually do the appropriation, the magic word. We appropriate that money. Until then, there is no promise. So, and if, if you want to talk to the people who vote on that appropriation, you talk to the six people in these chairs. Those are the people who make that decision, nobody else does. And I said six people, I didn't say us because it's whoever is in these six chairs through time. It's not personal to us by any means. And so people, I think, have to reorient themselves to how this, how government works. And so, so I think it's important, I don't want to leave that impression that just for example, a lot of things are in the C I P tonight. They still have to come before the council and before the mayor to sign it or not. That's very important that you don't see it as a promise, it's a planning document.
I'm, I'm all for communication, but on April eleventh, the city council passed a resolution to execute an engineering agreement for, in connection with the Council Plus Athletic Complex Avenue J Reconstruction Project F Y seventeen dash twenty-one. So, you've known at least since April that, and I, I don't have the memo in front of me, but I'm pretty sure it says four hundred thousand dollars paid from sales tax.
Well, I think, if, if I may, and Roger can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we need a little bit more than, than three to four weeks heads up on big projects. I don't, I honest, as I sit here, I, I open all sorts of possibilities, how we do it. But either that or what I'd prefer is that we don't micromanage the, the proposal process. But at the same time that staff know that, and I'll, I'll put myself in the hot seat. In the daytime, when somebody asks me, do you think the governor will fund something or do you think this will pass the legislature? My first response is, I don't speak for the governor, he's my boss, but I don't speak for him. What I do is I implement the policy. Do you have suggestions? I'll take it back or, you know, if they say, well, I need to go talk here, I can say procedurally, here's how you do that. But I go out of my way to make very clear to folks, because the average person thinks that when they speak to someone in the government, that suddenly it's a promise and, but it's just not true. And I'm not saying that you misled anybody, I'm saying that it's just a common human nature reaction to hear something and to hear what you want to hear. We all do it, me included. I think a reminder to folks that when they come to the bureaucracy, that, of that, would probably be a good thing. Certainly, it's good self-preservation in my experience. But I do agree, we haven't had a, uh, planning, we had one when I first started, I suggested it to Tom at the time and we had one then. And, uh, well, that would have been four and a half years ago. I think, I think it's high time to have that so that we understand people's priorities.
Work with your schedules and make sure that it's convenient, so.
You know, and on that note, I would love it if we could have, uh, on our agenda every month, we all serve on different kind of things all over the community that, um, I think you're on the arena board. I, I'd love for people to report on what happened at their last meeting. It would help me stay up. You know, we serve on these things as a role on city council, but we don't really get an opportunity to share with each other what we've learned. I think Roger's serving on a soccer.
Soccer task.
Mm-hmm. So, I think that in itself, if we could, you know, on our study council, study session agenda, if everybody will let the mayor or Marcy know, you know, what committees you're serving on, we could all just, a quick report back, hey, you know, I went to this meeting, this is kind of what they're looking at. And that would help us all to keep each other up to date on.
Well, one of the things we talked about at staff meeting this morning and we'd have to work through the logistics so that we were in compliance with the Iowa Open Meetings Law is maybe after the study sessions having an extra ten or fifteen minutes to of update and those types of things. We just need to obviously improve communication, so.
And, and maybe rebalancing of committee assignments. I know some people are, are swamped and, speaking for myself, I, I.
Plenty of committees for people to serve on that I don't have people to serve on, so.
Well, particularly council and then, um, and then speaking for myself, the, the only boards or committees that I'm ex officio on in the community are ones that I am in my own right. I have never been appointed by either mayor to any board or commission, not one. And I have time and even in times when I've had a lot of time and, and I, I'd like to, I just for whatever reason don't get appointed.
I think senators would reach out though, like I asked specifically to be on the arena commission because I knew it was one and I knew Matt was the council member. So I'd asked him, hey, if you get elected, can I take your spot? I mean, so I think a lot of times, just ask and you.
I, I just don't even know what boards we have because, well, we don't get reports from them. So honestly, there are probably boards that exist that I don't even know exist.
I don't think so. We get reports on all of them. Stormwater, I was asked by, I, I can't remember if I was asked by Tom to serve on that or if I was asked by Matt or if.
Tom, I think.
I think it was Tom.
We don't get reports.
And we just had a report from them last week, we got their quarterly, or last meeting, we got their quarterly update. Uh, library board, I don't think has any, anybody serving right now because nobody can go during their time.
I was the liaison for many years there, three forty-five on Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month and nobody's available to go at three forty-five.
And then there's the transportation.
Civil rights, we don't get reports.
I don't think there's anybody on civil rights, that was Lynn.
Was it?
Transportation, I think, was Lynn, but I don't think there's anybody on that now. So, most, a lot of the things I serve on are again, you know, outside of an appointment, but there are lots of them, but they meet during the day. A lot of them meet during the day, so.
Well, and that's one of the difficulties, people want a part-time government but want us available and so we can make a living and they kind of have to pick. And that's one of the difficulties and, and I know that it's tough to get time to meet with us and, and I'm not telling people when to have their meetings, but if, if they want a responsive government, but they also want a small, part-time government, they've got to pick one. They can't, you know, you're either gonna have to meet with us seven P M. or, or make this a full-time job, which I'm not suggesting. And, and, and make it so that we don't have to eat to make a living another way. You, you can't have it both ways.
Alright, anything else on the public hearings? Anything on the resolutions?
I've got some questions on the C I P.
You know, I, I, before we go there, I want to say something. We had an extended discussion today whether or not the C I P actually needs to go before the planning commission. Technically, I don't think from a financial planning perspective it does, but Rose Brown pointed out that many of those projects and Dick too, I don't know what the exact language is, need concurrence from the planning commission that, that they are within the scope of the city's comprehensive plan. And it has not seen the light of day at the planning commission yet. And so, the council can, um, my suggestion, the council can do whatever it wants to do. My suggestion would be that we approve it, subject to approval of the planning commission, which the next meeting is on July eleventh. Twelfth, yeah, we're on July eleventh, so it's twelfth, so it'd be the day after our next council meeting. If we don't approve, if we don't go that route and we wait for the planning commission's approval, we would do it the last meeting in July. Um, so those are, we could keep the, um, carry it over until the last meeting in July or you could approve it subject to approval of the planning commission, which would happen on the twelfth of July.
Do you think we should let them have it first so in case they do have some feedback? I mean, is it making any difference timing for us?
I don't want to vote before they vote. At that, I think it gives improper pressure on them, unintended, I, I don't.
I, I agree with that.
Letting him, look at first, let us postpone it until July whatever the.
Whatever that second.
July twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Fourth Monday, I'm sorry. So, yeah, but if you have questions, let's address those and.
Sure.
Mine's gonna be for Larry. I was a little disappointed and I know there's only so much money to go around and we've got a lot of projects going on, but there is nothing in here for a park out in the newer areas of Council Plus until twenty-one and that's just, uh, forty thousand dollars for a master plan for the park. That area of town does not have anything and it continues to grow. Now, there's another new subdivision going in and I know we had the conversation that, you know, when I go to Omaha, every one of the new subdivisions have a minimum of one park within subdivision, sometimes two. Well, Larry explained to me they have S I D. and we don't. This is gonna continue to keep getting pushed to the back burner because it, it's easy to push it. It takes a lot of money to build a park. Yes, we have land, but we don't have the money to build the park. I just don't feel like putting off even looking at a master plan for the park out there until twenty-one is reasonable. I mean, there are, those are family neighborhoods with a ton of children, a lot of families. We need to find a mechanism, we have to figure it out. You know, I don't know how we can do what Omaha's doing since we don't have S I D., but I'd like to see some ideas, I'd like us to start working on a plan that puts this park sooner than two thousand twenty-one. I mean, these people, a lot of them believe that there would be a park that would go in shortly after they purchased and they, they have no hopes of seeing a park, so.
I would tell you it's a fairly common complaint that I get.
I do too and it's, to me, it's unacceptable to have that many subdivisions and houses and rooftops that have nothing within walking distance, nothing even close to within walking distance. But I'd like to see us all start working on, you know, throwing out ideas until we come out with a way of, you know, doing it during the development. Because, you know, developers want to put a park in, they say they'll put a park in, then it never goes in. We have to find a way to make this stuff start happening.
I think Duggan gave us land.
He gave us land.
It certainly wasn't the prime land.
No.
We might have to start requiring it at some point in the approval. I know that increased costs, but at some point, if, if you look historically at cities in this country, if you look at areas that, that develop the least amount of green and public space over time, those become the areas that become the least desirable to live within a hundred years. So, you're, you're creating your areas, you're creating your quote-unquote bad areas of town by planning from the get-go. If, if you don't make it a place that people long-term want to be, and you're right.
I don't want a plan that requires the entire cost to go on the developer. I don't want to, I don't want to do anything more to make people not want to come to Council Us to develop. We need those developers, we need those new properties going on the tax rolls. I'd like to find a plan that works with the developer, that implements something similar to what Omaha's doing, except we're gonna have to find a funding source for us. So, Larry, any ideas, anything we can do?
I, I would just say this in a response. And, and this goes along with the conversation that we've had here today and we've been having as a staff. I have felt the clear direction from this council in the past has been take care of what we have. And the priorities you've seen come from us and through the mayor to you, the neighborhood parks, the rehab of the major parks, have reflected what, what I think I've heard. All the studies of our park system, all the master plans, all identify that we have a problem in service on that side of the community. So, if now there's a significant interest that we need to be looking harder over there, the how to do it is difficult. But it's a matter of how much do we have and where does it go? We spent a lot of money on the riverfront, that was a priority. We're there now, we've started on Fairmont, we've, we've done something there. We've, we've turned that from a place where nobody would go to where everybody is right now, this time of the afternoon, it's full of people. So, we've made progress, moving towards parks where people don't have them is really important. And hearing that from the council, and I have people who have called me and complained and I said, you know, I don't remember anybody until you talked to me a month ago from the council saying this is a priority for us.
Yeah, we talked about it last year.
And I think sometimes, you know, we, we want to listen, we just need to get the feedback of which way to go. And that's, that's why having a good C I P and I think what you're seeing this year is head and shoulders above what we've done in the past. The software program, we can build something and follow it through, it's, it's excellent. So, um, I'll sit down with Don and with the mayor and we'll see.
It's a, it's a unique gift though that keeps on giving because it's expensive to put in and it's expensive to maintain and, and I've told people that have called me and I don't think they like my statements because I think mothers who have kids less than age five like to go swing on the swing set for ten minutes. But kids do not go outside to play anymore. They don't play workup, they don't play pickup basketball. They, if you were born after the, kind of the rule of thumb, if you were born after nineteen eighty-four, you spend more time indoors than outdoors recreating. And, and so, um, you know, again, it's, that's my personal opinion and certainly it's, Nate says everyone's entitled to their own, so.
And I think, Matt, too, that we're seeing just a little bit of a change in the way these parks are going in around the country. They're not putting in such large parks, they're putting in, you know, maybe two smaller parks in a very large subdivision so that, but I, they're very much used when I'm, I'm kind of out during the day. So, you know, you're right, it's mothers pushing the strollers, they're taking their kids. But I, I want a long-range plan because, you know, and what I really want to see is us to continue to develop and bring in more subdivisions in that area, but we have to have a plan that works all the way around. And it means not taxing, you know, the taxpayers a whole bunch more money. It means just trying to come up with maybe a mechanism. And honestly, Larry, I don't know what it is, you know, I don't know what that is, but we need something similar to how Omaha is getting it done.
You know, when we look at it, when I, when I ask my friends, particularly the ones of, at the age where they're having children, why they moved to Omaha, one of the reasons that they give is that the neighborhoods have more amenities like that. They're looking, now, will they actually go out and do all those things? It's like when I buy an exercise bike, I intend to use it. Will I, will I use it as much as I thought when I buy it? No, I won't. But when I ask them, so, I agree, a lot of them eventually don't go out as much, but when they're looking at that neighborhood, where they want to go, things like that are a premium, things that people want because, you know, a lot of places don't have them. And that's one of the reasons why we tend to lose people. It's not the only one and I'm not saying we lose tons of people, but if our goal is to keep the kids we've educated or to have them consider coming back after they're done with school or trade or whatever and they're looking to have kids and they're thinking maybe being close to family again, rather than going to Omaha or other places, you know, having those sorts of things are a selling point. In the end, I don't know if there is a magic bullet other than, and I know we don't want to increase tax burden, but probably if we're serious about it, we're gonna have to at least put a certain amount of money where our mouth is in the sense of budgeting it in the C I P to build parks. Because if we're going to rely on, if we don't charge it to the developers or those who are building and based on the way Iowa state law is screwy in this respect frankly, there's really no good way to do it. And this is an area where I think Nebraska does have a better law and we just don't have that and I don't see that changing soon on this point.
The state constitution doesn't allow for you to have changed the constitution.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So, so the only, so we're, we're gonna have to fund them, which is what we did in the nineteenth century. Some of them we got as gifts, whether we wanted them or not, like Fairmont, yes. But if we really mean it, I mean, if, if we're gonna spend, not to rehash and all the ground, but if we're gonna spend on, on roads, a half million there, stuff like that, then we ought to be able to find over a five or ten-year period to be able to do a half million towards a park. Now, it doesn't get you much today, but at least it would dedicate some ground and maybe a swing set and that's a heck of a lot more than we've got now. We've got to start somewhere before those areas filled, fill in. And if, if it becomes completely built out, uh, and you know a lot more about property than I do, but I've got to believe it's cheaper to build it when it's early as opposed to later when it's full.
Yeah, well, did the access to the land, so anyway, I was just, that was my question, so.
Property to the east of Valley View that would need to be utilized as park ground as we develop.
Well, and that's a, that's a really good, that's a really good question.
I didn't know that.
But is that the part, is that where it needs to be? And it seems like, to me, it seems like it is, but I clearly think it isn't, it's not.
It's just too, it's not far enough out and I think that, as we see, I think they're starting what, I don't know whatever what phase they're on for Hills of Sea to Creek, but I think they're on phase three or. It just keeps going further and we just, you know, that's just a very long way to go to Valley View Park from all the way out there.
And, and you can't see it.
No.
You go by it every day, you don't, you would not know it's there because you can't, if you lived out there and you drive on that road. if you lived out there and you drive on that road, unless you look for it, you don't know that it's there because of the creek and the trees and, yeah, I get that.
Anyway, I'd just like to see that priority moved up to higher than three if possible if, you know, I don't know, that's my opinion, but I think we need to start addressing it if we are going to continue to see that development up there. And that's all I have.
By the way, Larry, while you're up there, I want to commend you for some of the write-ups that you put in, into the CIP for, for those who received the long version of that, the more detailed version, thank you for that copy, Dan. Going through that, I, I noticed the projects for, for your, for your department, and, and they were well detailed as to what the vision was and what you expected the final product to be and the, and the motivations behind it, the expectations along the way. And that struck out to me because many of the other departments, many of their projects provided cryptic descriptions at best if there was much of anything at all, but yours were, yours were very well set out, and, and since this is a document that's important for planning, you helped achieve that end, so I appreciate the time and attention that you put into that.
Well, I, I think everybody behind me would agree that CIP is really important, and, and I, I listened to Nate's comments about it being a guideline and a planning tool, and while I understand that somewhat, I guarantee you to us, it tends to be more than that. If, if it's in in 2016 or 18, I, I'm already thinking about how I'm going to make it happen. So if, if council sees projects that you don't like, like the conversation today, we want to get into more new parks, this is a great time to hear it because when it's a year away or two years away, you know, I'm headed down that track. And if, if you pull me back, that's, you get to make that vote. But that's why we have a really good product here, we have a good piece of software. It, it just, it makes it so easy for, I think, for you to see what it is we're planning and when we're going to do it. If you want to say to me, we're spending too much money on Fairmont Park, don't, don't wait till 2018 to tell me, you know, let me know now and I can start making changes.
Well, it made a real impression upon me, and I guess I would recommend to the other department heads that if they give that sort of time and attention to providing those types of explanations, that would be very helpful.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not a popular guy now, I guess.
I know.
Ann's gonna.
Hold on, real quick before we, is everything working? Do we need to wait a minute? I was trying to get your attention earlier to see if it's okay or?
I don't know.
Can they not hear us?
No, no, it's not working. So I don't know if we should wait a minute and let them try to make it work or what do you think?
It's probably too late at this point on how long.
But does she need it for her, for her feedback?
Well, I have it on.
She tips.
Oh, you do, okay. That's okay then.
Something we can resolve in the next, because we have just.
The video is not showing out on the screen.
I'm, I'm watching Channel 17 here and I, and I checked the web, straightened the dude's, I'm not sure.
I got a text from my husband and says it's not working.
Tell him to go to Judge Judy.
Hopefully, are the other channels working? We'll have a real crisis if that's not the case.
I really wanted to take a moment to come up here and, and indicate how the staff, how my colleagues were, were instructed on how to fill this software out because this is a big new process for us, and to fill in everything that's there. When I talked to them, I said, it's critical for us to get the cost information, get the years in there, get some kind of explanation in there. So there are a number of departments that, that put in what we needed, but they didn't put a lot of detailed explanation because we were already late, I was already late in getting the CIP put together. I know there are people that would put much more information in, and as we go through more years, we're going to improve this process and get more information in. But people weren't asked to fill in a lot of the description and detail, they were asked to get the, get the priority pieces in, get the titles in, get them classified so that we could move forward. Larry went ahead of the curve on that, and I think he did a great job of it, I think you're right. But it wasn't that everybody else sloughed it off, it's that I said, we're not to that point with this software yet. We'll get there, we'll make it happen, but that was part of the instruction and the way we put it together. And I just wanted to clarify that for you so that you understand, the rest of my colleagues did not shirk their, their responsibilities on that, it's just that Larry got ahead of the curve, but they weren't asked to do a great amount of detail on it.
Larry was just overachiever for the day.
Yeah, and good on him because, you know, it, it does help us quite a bit in, in understanding what it is that's being proposed and, and why and, and what the usefulness of the project is going to be in the long run.
It does, and as time goes on, we'll coordinate more of that to make that happen, just as we'll coordinate the detailed sheets, match it when we make revisions. For example, with those detailed sheets, those were run right away on Tuesday morning after the council meeting, but to get the local option sales tax stuff in, it took a couple more days to get that in. We ran down and ran a set of those detailed sheets. Now, they would agree with those front sheets, so it's, it's again a process of getting this, all of this software and all of this information into sync, and, you know, that falls on me. My colleagues have done an admirable job putting this together, and I just want to, want to make sure you understand that.
Well, and, and I think that goes to the benefits of taking the time and effort and expense to shifting to this new software and this new way of putting this together because in comparing this against prior CIPs, there wasn't nearly as much information on individual projects. So it, it kind of limited our ability to really go beyond just the, just the numbers and the, and the project title to really help to understand what it's, what it's about. And so as a, as a planning tool, I think that's a significant improvement, and my compliments to the folks who recommended shifting to, to this sort of, to this sort of product.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the resolutions?
Continuing, Dan, why don't you come back up, I'm sorry. I, I did have some, some other questions about the, the CIP. Last study session, you, you provided us the, the letter from, from Department of Revenue saying, surprise, you're, you're going to get less money.
It really was a government letter, though, because.
Right.
While we're getting less, we're getting more, kind of, I mean, in the scheme of things. We had a big, significant increase that could only logically be attributed to the extensive construction at Google and workers staying in town, eating at restaurants, paying hotel bills, I think is where the money came from. And then we went back to a new normal when Google slowed down, but it's still showing growth.
Well, and we're looking at that, we're looking at those numbers to, to see before we get into our next planning cycle, and they send us numbers for 17, 16, 17, and 17, 18 in August. We'll get ahead of that, but that doesn't get to your question.
Well, the, the question that I was coming to was, I guess this reflects, as, as I read this, kind of a, a bit of volatility, at least at the state level, into, into the, the revenues that they believe are being taken in overall and, and what their comfort level is and turning those back, back around and making disbursements to the cities in turn. Do you, have you received any indication that this type of volatility, these types of surprises may be continuing into the future? Is this a one-time blip? Have they given you any further explanation?
They have not. I have, I've talked to one of our direct contacts at the Department of Revenue to try to, to find out when we would get the next cycle of information, as well as going back through our own records and finding out when we received certain distributions and amounts of money, because there are also, I don't know if I would call them excess sales tax monies or, or designated sales tax monies that are coming in above and beyond this for the levy reconstruction and for a lot of the flooding mitigation kinds of projects that are going on, which are being tracked separately from these funds. And whether the, the allotment of those affected the allotment of this, I don't know. I would hope not, I would expect not, but we, we have a little more work to do on, on working out a little better long-term prediction on, on some of those sources, sales tax, lodging tax, our gaming tax funds, those kinds of things that are all very important to this whole capital improvement plan.
You may need to grab your binder for my other question because I was going to ask you a detailed question with respect to the entry on page 65, which is on PR 17-01, River Edge I'll give you a chance to locate that.
What, what page are you on there?
That was on page 65.
65. That's after 64, right? Okay, we got it.
Okay. So now, leading up to my question, a month ago, we, we voted on Resolution 16-135, and if you recall, that, that resolution referenced both PR 16-06, which was in the current CIP, and then PR 17-01, I think it is. Did I get that right, or is it 07?
Well, again, I, I, I think I'm familiar with what you're referring to.
Okay, and, and back then, I, I asked about that particular item in the CIP, and you corrected me and said, no, 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 that's not, that's not the old CIP, that's in the, that's in the new CIP, the discussion of, of that particular project for fiscal year 17.
How it was denoted.
Right, right. Now, so, so that particular resolution that we passed a month ago provided bonding authority of 2.66 million. Okay, so having said that, we again referenced in that resolution PR 16-06, and that noted in the resolution that was funded with $1.2 million in bond revenue, which is correctly noted in last year's CIP. So that, so that was, so that puts together. If you come to, let me find the page again here. Come to PR 17-01, it says that it's funded with $820,000 in, in bonds. Yet, the, the resolution that we passed last week said that it was funded for that particular line item with $1.46 million in bonds.
Here's the problem. In the 15-16 Capital Improvement Plan, there was supposed to be 10 million something in bond funds available. When we sold bonds for that program, we didn't sell 10, $10 million in funds. We only sold six or seven million dollars. And so after the fact, as we're looking into this and finding that we don't have all the bond funding for the projects that were approved in the CIP, we had to start moving those immediately. One of those that got moved was the 1.2 million from last year in the Playland area. Now, the project itself had been approved, but you'll recall that we did the refunding for a combination of the Echo acquisition, the Playland Park Phase Two, and, and we did the police station as well so that we could begin making expenditures there. And those are so that we can take those, out of those bonds when they're sold. This particular one is that we have, and it's on page 10 of the, of the packet material, we have capacity to sell about $6.7 million in bonds, but we have already committed through prior CIP plans about 3.95 million of that money. And so that has to come off, that actually, the funding actually comes from prior years to get to that total, and on this, page 65, it should have shown that because that's a combination of, where is it? That's a combination of prior year bond funding and what we expected to have this year, which would be the, the 1.2 from this year plus the 1.6 overall, which would be 2.8.
Okay. I'm not seeing that listed on page 65. So, so do I?
So the total funding sources for that 1.64 are not listed in the funding sources, that's a, that's an error.
Okay.
That should be accounted for, and we'll have to find a way to get prior year funding into that listing.
So did I, did I understand you to say that part of that 1.2 million dollars that had already been approved was used for other projects?
No. It was just not ever acquired through the bonding process. Because if we approve $10 million in bonding projects and we only sell six or seven million dollars worth of bonds.
6.8 is my recollection.
6.8. We're not going to have enough to do everything that was in the plan, so we had to postpone that. Unfortunately, a couple of those projects were already underway, under the assumption that once the CIP was approved, that the funding would be there. I think we've, we've gotten some internal communication together to help us understand that we need to make sure of our funding sources before we start because there was this mix-up, especially with the, the bonds that were undersold related to what was in the adopted budget.
Okay.
So that's why we come with, for example, that sheet that talked about our bonding capacity out into the future, because we can't overpromise bond proceeds if we can't get them.
Okay, well, that kind of caught me off guard because when, when we approved that, that bonding in that resolution a month ago, the CIP wasn't available for us to review yet at that time, and so when I saw this, it appeared as though we had approved about $640,000 more in bonding authority than was required for, for that particular project.
No. Unfortunately, no. We have, we have approved in the bonding sources 820,000, I believe it is, for.
Correct.
That project.
Yep. And then the, the remainder, the, the second $820,000 was.
Was grant funds.
Other grant funds.
Right. And the 1.2 million that comes from what should have been last year's bond is still coming out of last year's CIP because bond funds will carry over for up to 36 months. Clear as mud?
Pretty much like a pretzel at this point, yeah, okay.
Okay, okay. I'd be happy to sit down and go over with you at any time you'd like.
I, I appreciate that. I think I'll take you up on that offer.
Okay. Unless the good Lord takes me, I'll be around.
Any questions? Any other questions on the resolutions? Any other questions on the resolutions? Anything's on the applications for permits and cancellations? All right. We'll see you at 7 o'clock.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.